2019, we are located at the Veterans Memorial Hall. It is 6:00 PM, we're 209 Surf Street in Morro Bay after a beautiful, beautiful sunset this evening. Aren't we fortunate to be here? At this moment, I would like to offer a moment of silence for all those in need. If Councilmember Addis, would you lead us in the pledge? I would appreciate it.
(Inaudible)
See, we have no recognitions this evening, and I'll ask the city attorney if we have any reportable items from our closed session.
No reportable actions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Move to Mayor and Councilmember reports. I'm going to start this evening and then move to my left and from left to right. I wanted to give you the results of the validation, verification tabulation that was done by our city clerk and staff in conjunction with a number of our community members. It's been posted on the website, it's available there for your review, so feel free to look at the detailed report if you'd like to see that. I'm going to give you a summary. First of all, I would like to thank community members that participated in that validation process. Many of them spent multiple hours in a very tedious, long process that encompassed a week and a half, almost two weeks. I'd like to thank Steve Francis, Val LeBlanc, Monica Bischoff, Bill Bowles, Linda Fidel, Orbis Cowgill, Dan Sedley, Aaron Oakes, Barry Brannon, and a special thanks to Dana and Lori from our staff for all of the time that you put in in making this happen. As you will recall, we agendized a couple of meetings ago the need to review not only the submitted appropriate ballots, 218 protest ballots, but also we decided to not necessarily validate because we'd already approved through the public hearing process the final resolution and sanctioned the 218 hearing, but we also decided to count the 1,000 that were presented to the council during that evening. And I'm going to give you the results of that. As directed, staff carefully reviewed 2,163 purported written protests and five written requests for withdrawal of protests that were received prior to the September 11th public hearing. That was according to the criteria that were established on the resolution that we used to do that. In addition, the 1,000 purported protests identified as collected prior to the distribution of the 218 notice on July 13, 2018, were also validated. Just give you a quick summary of those results. From the protests that were received prior to the except, excuse me, prior to and accepted during the public hearing, net of the withdrawals, valid protests were 1,560. There were 260 duplicates, 292 were determined to be invalid, and 73 were requiring further validation if indeed the number was high enough to have the 218 pass, which it was not. Of the 1,000 protests identified and collected during the meeting and after the date, new protests were 272. Of those 1,000, 665 were duplicates contained in the set that I previously spoke to, 70 were determined to be invalid, and 62 were requiring further validation. The summary of that is without those purported protests that needed further validation and further verification, the number of verified purported protests submitted timely in accordance with Prop. 218 law and Resolution 4418 was 1,560. If you add to that the deemed new protests from the 1,000 that were received at the meeting prior to the Prop. 218 notice, the total of 1,832, which would be the total protest that would have been accepted, is less than the number that would have been needed. That was 2,794 to prohibit the council from approving the WRF surcharge. So the final count, which did include the invalid 1,000, was 1,832 versus 2,794. Just wanted to give that to you for information. If you want to go to the website and see the complete report in addition to the staff report, that is available for your purview. With that, I'll move to my left, Councilmember Reports. Councilmember Addis?
Mine's kind of lengthy, but first I want to thank all of you who came out to the Women's March on Saturday. We had about 5,000 people there, many residents from Morro Bay, so thanks to those of you that were able to come out. And then I want to touch on our local Coast Guard. I'm going to start with some thank yous and then share my concerns and some actions that I think are important. So I definitely want to thank the Coast Guard for continuing without pay and not knowing when they'll get pay. And Congressman Carvajal, who came to Morro Bay on Saturday to check in with our local Coast Guard and see what their needs are. I want to thank Chief Crochet of our local Coast Guard for arranging that meeting and doing the legwork. And then my colleague, Councilperson Davis, who I went to that meeting with, and to staff for adding Agenda Item C4. The concerns that were raised when we met with the local Coast Guard was that some of the men feel that their housing is at risk because they're not receiving pay and their housing allowance is included in that pay. Many said that they're eating out less, so they're spending less money in our local Morro Bay economy. They talked about stress to their families. There were issues around morale and being able to recruit to the Coast Guard when folks aren't sure if they're going to get paid. And then there's also loss to our community in terms of volunteer hours. Many of the men stationed at our local Coast Guard volunteer at Del Mar School, and because of the federal shutdown, they're not able to engage in those volunteer activities anymore. So it's a pretty serious issue for our community. But I do think that addressing this issue speaks to the power of our local government and our local community. And so while we were there at that visit, at least two residents showed up, bringing food to the men stationed at our local Coast Guard. And that was extremely heartwarming, but also necessary to see. Grill Hut has offered free meals, Sierra Vista has offered free meals, Harvey's Honey Huts is delivering toilet paper, and Seven Sisters Brewery is offering free meals. So I, we've heard, obviously you've seen the news today, that there might be a possible deal to end the shutdown, but we don't know what's going to happen. And that's what the congressman really expressed, is that we don't know that it will end anytime soon, and that the men don't know that it's going to end anytime soon. And so for those of you that want to support, we hope you'll stick with it for the long haul. There is a GoFundMe that is sponsored by a gentleman in Cambria, and he's working directly with our local station. And so some folks have been worried about where does money go if you donate. This GoFundMe is in direct contact with our local station, and you can find that. The URL is GF.me/you/p6y85b. So that's GF.me/you/p6y85b. That's the URL if you should want to donate. It's also pinned to the top of my Facebook page, @DonAddisCityCouncil.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Addis and I have been in contact with Chief Crochet at the Coast Guard Station for the past two weeks, and he wants first to assure everyone that the station is fully operational. They have funds appropriated to continue to protect lives and property and to provide national security. His fourth of 30 men, however, is receiving nothing for basic living expenses, and more than half of his men have families living here. The guardsmen are receiving no salary and no allowances to pay for food, housing, gasoline, or any normal living expenses. By the end of this month, he said that will become critical, especially for the younger troops who have not had time to build up savings. And it is also a major hardship for the families. Chief Crochet appreciates the huge community support that he is receiving, and he asked us to say thank you to everyone. The Rotary Club donated $1,000 in gift cards. Morro Bay's three safety departments, fire, police, and harbor, collected and donated $600. Jim Mang in Cambria has set up the GoFundMe account that Don referred to. Individuals are knocking at the door of the station all day and bringing groceries. Jason and Lori at the Grill Hut are providing free meals all day, every day, to the guardsmen and their families. Paul Warsham, president of the San Luis Obispo Veterans Service Collaborative, is mobilizing support from local American Legion posts. Kevin Drabinski has his food bank trucks ready to roll at a moment's notice when the need for food becomes critical. But the real need is for money. That's what pays the rent, the mortgage, the everyday necessities of running a household, such as buying laundry soap so the men can wash their uniforms. Coast Guard Mutual Assistance is helping, but they are spread thin. They are able at this time to make a one-time loan, interest-free, to families of $1,000 and $750 to individuals, but that's just one single loan. It doesn't go very far. The Coast Guard itself is not allowed to receive donations of money, but Chief Crochet is working with the Chief Petty Officers Association to accept money. They are a 501(c)(3) organization, and Chief Crochet is able to access that fund and disperse funds to his people. So what I'm urging people to do is to give money to the CPOA, Chief Petty Officers Assistance Fund. I am standing in solidarity with our Coast Guard associates, and I am pledging my city salary to the CPOA until Coast Guard pay and allowances are restored. It's not much. The city pays me $106 a week, but I'm donating all of it to the Coast Guard CPOA fund. We have an item tonight on our agenda, C4, for council to send a letter to Washington to ask to stop the shutdown and resume operations. And as part of that discussion, I want to ask council to authorize Mr. Collins to set up a site on the city's website to keep people apprised of what's going on with the Coast Guard and how we can help. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Heller?
Can I?
After we're done, you can come back and absolutely add that, yes.
Thank you, Mayor Heading. I'm a new council member, as you know, and I'm very interested in getting to know more of you and the different issues in the city. I don't formally have office hours, but you can reach me via email at jheller@morobayca.gov. I have a phone number also, 805 area code, 471-1257. I turn it off when I sleep, but it's on the rest of the time, so please give me a call with your ideas about how we can make Morro Bay an even better place to live, or if you have some concerns or want some feedback, I'll try and answer that for you. I'd like to thank those councilmembers, Addis and Davis, for contacting the Coast Guard. I met with the chief myself this morning, and I reiterate and support the comments made by both of the other councilmembers. And that's about it.
Thank you. Councilmember McPherson?
Yeah, I don't have any announcements this evening, but I would like to just say that I fully also support what our fellow councilmembers have done, and I think it's so heartwarming to see the community come out with such great support. And when push comes to shove, this community gets together, so it's wonderful to see.
Great. Councilmember Addis?
One more thing. Some folks have asked why we keep saying "men," and that's because there's only men at this Coast Guard Station. There were plans to rent a house so that women officers or women Coast Guard could be added, and those plans have to be on hold as well because of the shutdown. So any expansion or additional plans to have both genders or more genders there have to be put on hold as well.
Thank you. I'll add my thanks to both of you for your outreach and to Congressman Carvajal for his assistance. We do have an agenda item tonight to discuss that will be at the end of the agenda. And what a great community we have that has been mobilized into action when there's a great needs, and that's what Morro Bay is all about. And thanks so much for noting that and giving accolades and shout-outs to those that are involved with that. With that, Mr. Collins, sir, any announcements?
No announcements.
No announcements? Great. We'll move forward with no presentations this evening, and we'll move to public comment. Once again, there is no requirement to fill out those dreaded white sheets or yellow sheets or pink sheets, but some of you have done that. I'll call on you first for public comment. Members of the audience wishing to address the council on city business matters not on the agenda may do so at this time. For those desiring to speak on items on the agenda but unable to stay, may also address the council at this time. I'll take those that have boldly filled out sheets. Again, no requirement to state your name, however, if you want your name in the record, then we would ask that you state your name and locale to help us with that. So first up is Jen Ford. Welcome, Jen.
Thank you, Mayor Heading and fellow councilmembers. As you said, my name is Jen Ford. I'm a local resident here in Morro Bay, and I'm here to speak on three different agenda items really quickly. The first one is C1. In regards to the wastewater treatment facility, I just encourage you to stay on course and move forward. I support your research and your decisions, and time is money. The second agenda item is C3, in regards to the time change for the council meeting. This is something that my family has actually talked about in the past and continue to talk about. It's really hard to stay at a council meeting as a viewer to the very end when you have an item towards the end. And I know those of you who are here, who are required to be here, it's a long night. And if we can move that up at all the time, if it makes it easier for everyone's lives, including those who come to speak and to listen, I encourage you to move that time up to 5:30 or even earlier. But that's also part of the reason why I'm here tonight, speaking right now, is because I can't stay. And the last agenda item that I am here to speak about is C4, the one that you were just discussing in regards to the letter to the federal government. Mayor Heading, I encourage you to please write that letter, whether or not it makes a difference. We can at least say that we have tried. As a city of Morro Bay, we've made a bold statement, and I would love to see that on our website so that we can follow the status of the Coast Guard and whatever else we could do as a community to help those who are working for the federal government. And it's not just the Coast Guard. We also have to note that there are other federal workers here that live in Morro Bay that are not just Coast Guard. So it's important to support our entire community. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Next up is Glenn Silaway. Mr. Silaway, asking for one minute.
My name is Glenn Silaway. I'm a resident of Morro Bay. I'm here tonight as the Chair of the Morro Bay Open Space Alliance. This may take a minute and 30 seconds, but I am impressed by what you guys have done with the Coast Guard and what the city is putting together. That's what we love about Morro Bay. I'm really proud of this town for pitching in like that. On my side, on the Open Space Alliance side, I have some good news tonight. We have signed an agreement with Castle Wind LLC for a challenge matching grant of up to $20,000 toward the preservation of Cerito Peak, what we call Eagle Rock. The trick is, it's a challenge grant, and we have to earn that money. Every donation between January 1 and June 30 will be doubled. So this is a good time to pitch in and help us put this open space into permanent status as open space and keep it forever. I have a few brochures here about Cerito Peak. I'm going to leave them on the back table. Our website is mbopenspace.org, and you can find your way there very quickly to a donate button, and we would appreciate your help. And Castle Wind, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kate Engivan. Kate? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Kate Engivan, and I am a local resident. I have two issues. The first is, I'd like to request a ban on gas-powered leaf blowers. The reasons are, they smell of gas, so they pollute the air. You can tell because they smell. And now, especially particularly due to climate change, every instance of burning fossil fuels adds to the negative impact. The second reason is they're very loud. They're very noisy, which creates more noise pollution in town. The third is, they're not very necessary. There are not a lot of leaves in town, and the leaves that are, are good for the soil. And it's good to get exercise. Everybody around Morro Bay loves exercise, so get a rake and get a broom. And I have, I did a lot of research. I found several, many California cities that already have a ban and descriptions of their code. And one in particular, I printed out the whole code for Newport Beach, so if I could hand it to someone, who would I give it to?
To the city clerk?
So I request a ban. The second issue is, I was walking the other day, I've been, it's been the breaks, so I've been gone a lot. But I was walking the other day down by Great America Fish Company and noticed that our stairway is gone. Our local stairway at the end of this street is suddenly gone. So I talked to, I thought it must be private property. It must be part of that, the sisters building, the construction project they're doing right now. And then I talked to a resident who said, "No, it's city property. It was just taken down." So I want to argue that it should be put back up. And the reason is, there's several reasons. The first is, it's community access. I take my dog, I walk down that way, and every time I do, I say hello to my other neighbors, and they're the same people. It's one of the charms of old Morro Bay, so I think it's unfriendly to take it out personally. And in Mayor Heading's campaign, he said that he wanted to improve the economics of Morro Bay while preserving its old charm, and I feel that that staircase is part of the old charm. It's also an emergency pedestrian evacuation staircase because it is the last access up to Main Street before there's no access at all. Like, you drive way, way down, and there's no access after that until you cross a pedestrian bridge and go around up the street on 41. It's also a very nice alternative route if you're a walker to the extremely busy, is it Beach Street that runs just the next street over? My dog, for example, he's a little guy, and he's scared. It's so annoying, there's so much traffic, there are lots of tourists, and my dog is afraid to walk down there. So now, because the stairway's gone, I have to-
Ten more seconds.
I have to drive down there, park, and then walk around, polluting the air. It's totally unnecessary. So, and also, it wasn't dangerous. And one of the reasons was, ironically, it looked dangerous, so people didn't take it unless they were locals, and it was fine.
They ask you to wrap it up, Kate.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Next up is Dan Sedley. Welcome, Dan.
Hello, my name is Dan Sedley. I live in Morro Bay. I had originally requested one minute, but some other things have come up, and I would like to extend that if I could.
Absolutely.
To less than three minutes, of course?
Absolutely.
Old subjects under the old city council that haven't quite been resolved yet, and they may seem menial, but they're not to us, to those of us that sit back here. And Mayor Irons was always saying, "Our chairs are almost here." But yet, we're still sitting in the old hard chairs with not a resolution that I've heard in sight, and I would appreciate sincerely, and I know the other members of the public would appreciate, a more comfortable environment to sit in for the many hours that we do. Secondly, and one of my original subjects was also the heating in the building. You'll see that most everybody in here is wearing sweaters and coats and everything. My hands and feet are cold. I'm not normally a cold person, but I hear the heaters running and the things blowing, but still the temperature is not up to what it needs to be for the audience at least to be comfortable. So I would like that looked at. I know it was brought up in the last city council meeting as well. My last subject that I hadn't anticipated on talking was the informal account of the proposition 218 votes. I want everyone in Morro Bay to realize that that's an informal count, and not recognize it as a formal count. And that was at the direction of the city council, that it only be an informal count. And so therefore, it doesn't pretend to be anything other than rough numbers. It's not a formalized count and should not be looked at or represented as such. And that was at the direction of the city council, not anyone else. So although we do have an informal of rough numbers, that's exactly what it is. If it's on the city council website, I believe it should be clearly identified as such and not a final or formal count. At the same time, I want to give extreme appreciation to Dana Swanson and to Lori for their diligence, for their hard work, for their endurance in even this informal count. Their professionalism was beyond reproach. I spent many hours with them. I cannot give them enough appreciation for how much, how supportive they were of each piece of paper that came in, whether it was invalid, whether it was a validated protest. They gave it their all, and as far as I'm concerned, every piece of paper was given its due diligence, except the ones that have not been researched and are not going to be researched. But again, my point is, that was an informal count and should not be, I don't even think, on the website, because it's not a formalized count. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up is John Weiss. John, welcome.
He's taller than I am. Good evening. My name is John Weiss. I'm a business owner and a resident of Morro Bay, celebrating 40 years. I know it doesn't look possible, but I want to primarily comment on two things. One is the Coast Guard and our first responders, and to thank them for their service and all that they do, and in any way we can support them. Number two is something I've brought up before, but I would have a request, and that relates to the routing of the pipes for the sewer project, and that's down Quintana Road and tearing up Quintana Road as I understand it. And what I would like to ask or request is that we keep one lane open during business hours. I think it's only reasonable. We do have a number of businesses that our citizens support. We've mentioned Albertson's, and there are Urgent Care and other places, but I think it's important that one lane is open at all times during business hours. it's important that one lane is open at all times during business hours. And I would ask if that can be, if there's a commitment that can be made for that. So thanks again. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you, John.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Next up is Richard Sadowski. Welcome, Richard.
I was looking at this C1, and this is quite different than what was reviewed, that the public reviewed. There's enough changes here that I would at least request that you table this matter so we get a chance to review it. Item C1, the routing and force main issues and the lift station issues are different. That said, you know, we walk around and we talk about, like, you know, Morro Bay, that small-town atmosphere and, you know, the community. And I ask myself, what that means? So what do you see? You know? And at the second to the last planning commission meeting that I was at, there was a girl, her name was Greta Thornberg, and she was speaking Katowice, Poland. And my wife and I were supposed to be in Poland. I have relatives there. And she basically says that she didn't come here to, she just came here to tell that there's changes coming, and change is real. You know, we're a coastal community, and climate change is a reality, okay? It's a climate crisis, actually. I'm a member of the Climate Reality Project Leadership Program. It was Al Gore's, like, a training center. And I went to Los Angeles, and we were there for three days. And listening to the story about environmental justice, people from, like, you know, Santa Monica getting credit, but, you know, East LA paying the price. And, you know, we need to start looking at the humanity of it. And so as Morro Bay citizens, ask yourself, who are you as a human? You see somebody, you know, a lot of people are just a paycheck away from homelessness. That could be your granddaughter. That could be your daughter, you know? So all I ask of you guys, when you start making decisions on any kind of spending and anything, ask yourself, who you are as people, and what do you want Morro Bay? Because Morro Bay's about people. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Appreciate that. That's the last speaker slip I have. Is there anybody else? You're certainly welcome to come up. Feel free to state or not state your name.
Good evening. Cynthia Hawley.
Welcome, Cynthia.
Thank you. I want to talk about a Brown Act issue. I know you're all aware that anything that you discuss or take action on at this meeting has got to be noticed on the agenda. And I look at item C1 on the agenda, provides the following notice. Monthly review of and status of, sorry, monthly review of the status of and actions regarding the water reclamation program. And this notice is very misleading, because the reader is led to believe that the agenda item is only a review of actions that have already been taken, when in fact, it includes three huge actions that you're being asked to take tonight that are not noticed. First, the application to the Local Area Formation Commission, better known as LAFCO, to add the approximately 370-acre Tri-W property on the north side of Highway 1 into the city's sphere of influence, which everybody knows is the first. The next step is annexation and then urban development. Second, the application to LAFCO to annex the 27-acre parcel into the city for the water reclamation facility. Third, the decision to consolidate the coastal development permit for the water reclamation facility project. That is, to have a single permit with the Coastal Commission instead of having three permits total for public participation. One would be the county, and the other would be the city, including the Coastal Commission. And while this is, agendizes giving direction, this was, you're the ones who make the decision. In order to give direction, you've got to decide whether you're going to do this or not. According to the Brown Act and to the public statutory right to full participation under the Coastal Act and common respect for your constituents, these items should be removed from this agenda and re-agendize with the proper notice for a future meeting, because they were not agendized tonight with a notice. If you choose not to amend the agenda and to proceed without proper notice, since these separate actions, these are separate actions under a single agenda item, please clarify that the public will be able to address each one separately in separate public comments. To do otherwise would be a denial of the public's rights to comment and to fully participate in these vital decisions that are very contested. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Keep it open for any other public comment. I see two at once. Well, it's okay. Come on forward. State your name if you desire.
I will. Carolyn Brickman.
Welcome, Carolyn.
Good evening, council, staff, my fellow community members. To start with, I'd like to express my concern about item C1 and some of its many parts that do appear to violate the requirements for a public hearing. And I will defer to Ms. Hawley, who has brought this issue to your attention tonight and also in public correspondence, and thank her for doing her homework and also our homework. There are a number of people who go through the reports very, very carefully and come and take the time to comment, and some of them are sitting here in the audience, and I learn so much from them and thank them a lot. Tonight, I want to express my thanks to those groups that are part of our democratic process. I'm going to save my thank yous to the community members, because I don't have enough time tonight to give them the kind of coverage that I should. But I would like to say that I noticed and appreciated the more civil and welcoming approach the mayor took toward public comment at the last meeting. Thank you. It's important to all of us that the council facilitate and protect and welcome, yes, welcome, public comment, even expressions of dissenting points of view, how aggravating they might be. Good argument is informative, and it's definitely part of good democracy. Thank you, council, also for putting C3 on the agenda tonight. I fully support an earlier starting time. Please vote yes. I also appreciate that A7, regarding appointment to council subcommittees and liaison assignments, is on the agenda. Thanks for listening to community members' concerns about the unevenly distributed assignments to those groups. I was very glad to see the changes that were made. In addition, I'd like to thank you and staff, I'd like to thank staff and council for providing the agenda for this meeting, I think it was over a week before it usually is out. I hope that continues. It would give all of us more time to study issues coming before council and even time to reach out to council and staff with questions and comments. It's very hard to wait until Thursday, and then we have the weekend, and getting through those reports with the agenda is really difficult. And I think that it would give us time to come in and talk to the appropriate people about some of the issues that concern us. I want to thank you, Ms. Callaway, and staff, for all the work you've done to publish monthly financial reports and for making these available to the community online. And thank you to CFAC for your efforts in helping to bring about these reports.
10 more seconds.
And I'm going to save my comments, my thank yous to community members for another night. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Any other public comment? Yes. State your name if you so desire.
Good evening. Marla Jo Sadowski, North Morro Bay.
Welcome, Marla.
Thank you. The last time I was here, you were going to check on, well, you weren't. Mayor Irons was here. But I had asked about the status of Marshall Okilski, and he's the representative, the lawyer representative for Tri-W Enterprises, Inc. And he's been the negotiating representative for the MOU for the purchase of the property that the city's buying for the proposed plan. He's also on LAFCO, unless his term was up in December, I think, and I haven't checked to see if he's still on LAFCO. However, I had asked whether he was going to recuse himself, since he is the representative on the property negotiations with the city. And in that MOU, a large portion of that MOU has to do with the LAFCO annexation of the rest of what is called the remainder parcel of about 400 acres. I guess it's less than that, because part of it's already owned by the city. But anyway, did you check on that, Mr.?
We'll respond at the end. Thank you.
Okay. And another thing I'd like to say is that I'm, well, I'll wait. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other public comment? Be happy to have anybody speak. Yes, please come forward. If you feel so compelled, state your name.
Good evening, council, Mayor Heading. My name's Todd Gailey. I was a fire captain, paramedic for the city of Morro Bay, and I'm here to talk about my wrongful termination. Knowledge is power. And I'm here specifically to let you, the council, know where I stand, and that's present and ready to be held accountable and move forward in training and move forward as a city employee. I also want the public to know what's going on and why I was terminated, for directing my crew to rescue a seagull from a power drop. But Martin Luther King quote, one of my favorites, says, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." And I'm here standing before you, trying to be as respectful as I can in trying to move forward with the actions that were taken against me. And I wouldn't be here if I didn't think it was wrong that was done to me. And so I'm doing the best I can to fight for my job and to present to you and to the community who I am as a person. And I've grown up here, Central Coast and Los Angeles and Morro Bay, and lived almost my whole life here. Served the city for over 16 years, 21 years total in the fire service. And I want to stand before you and say, I'm sorry that I'm here in this circumstance. I'm sorry for my actions leading to this. And I'm an advocate for all employees to be able to receive progressive discipline. I was not. I was simply terminated, I believe unjustly. This is in LA, you know, our big city. Morro Bay is like a family. And I've served here for almost, like I said, over 16 years. And I've been dedicated to continuing to improve my knowledge and ability to serve the community, but also who I am as a man and the way I serve off-duty. And just real quickly, I want to briefly talk about a couple circumstances that I believe set me apart, not only as a fire captain for the city of Morro Bay, but as a man. And that's a call I went on about a year ago, and it was simply a local widow who needed help with changing batteries in her smoke detectors. And we went, we responded, and we noticed that her smoke detector is not, not only needing new batteries, but she needed new smoke detectors, and they were very outdated. And she was going to need new smoke detectors throughout her house, were not easily accessible. So I actually took it upon me to go on my day off. My next duty, I took my kids with me, and we bought her, for $153, we bought her five brand-new smoke detectors, installed all of them in her house, and I got to show my kids how to serve someone. And she went to write a check to reimburse me for the cost of the detectors. And I said, hey, that's just for my family. I want, me and my kids, we want to be able to serve you.
About 10 more seconds. Thanks.
Thanks. So I have a couple other people that want to talk about some ways that I've served, but I stand here, present, wanting to move forward with the city and train and become a better man and fire captain. I thank you. Thanks for your service.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Any other public comment? Okay, I see three, four getting up at once. Sir, feel free to state your name. If not, no worries.
Bob Eisenberg.
Welcome, Bob.
Morro Bay. Some of you know me, Jody, some, all of the people that come out to the Rock. I'm the guy that sits there and watches the Falcons for the last 20 years. I've known Todd for some amount of time. I didn't get to know him until he came to my house on an emergency call. I had a AFib attack. I didn't know what it was, never had one. But he's the guy who hooked me up, sent me to the hospital. And I think you guys are missing a real, a real guy here, you know? I've seen him hang off of helicopters. I've photographed him. I've photographed numerous rescues at the Rock. I call them in to the Harbor Patrol. And he's fearless. And with something like this, you've got to think twice about what you're doing with a guy like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes. Feel free to come forward. If you so inclined, state your name. If not, no worries.
My name's Heather O'Connor.
Welcome, Heather.
Thank you. I live in Morro Bay since 2011, and Bob Eisenberg is here because I called 911. That's not the only time I saw him on our street, Center Court. He has come numerous times to assist elderly people in times of need for serious conditions. And he also came when there was a fire at a neighbor's house. He continually worked to resolve the problems after the fire was taken care of. I saw him several times, and he's the kind of person you want here in Morro Bay. I'd like to have him reinstated. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes. Again, feel free to state your name. If not, no problem. All of you?
Good evening.
Any of you?
Thanks. We're together, but only one of us is speaking. How about that?
That's fine.
We're the Williams family.
Welcome to you all.
Thank you. Thanks, thank you for being here. Christine, Alana, and Michael. We're here also asking you to restore Fire Captain Todd Gailey's position with the Morro Bay Fire Department. We've also been helped by Todd in a big way. If you were here in the Morro Bay community in 2006, you might, you very possibly remember the very dramatic ocean drowning accident suffered by Alana on February 12th and the amazing rescue. She was pulled possibly a quarter mile out into the ocean by a rip current. And as Todd still remembers, she was in the ocean for 23 minutes. Many people from several agencies, and also two private citizens, were involved indirectly, excuse me, directly or indirectly, in locating her in the ocean and transporting her onto the beach. And Todd was directly involved in that. Once on the beach, she was transported to the parking area in the back of a pickup truck. Her mouth and lungs were full of water, and she was obviously not breathing and did not have a normal heartbeat by any stretch of the imagination. It was very difficult, and it took multiple tries, but Todd was able to successfully intubate her in the back of a pickup truck, driving quickly across the sand to the Azure Street parking lot. While we give Jesus the ultimate credit for Alana's miraculous rescue and survival, even though she does have a brain injury, there were many, and there were many people involved. Todd was the incident commander and obviously had a major role in the outcome. And he also personally took the time to visit us at the hospital in Santa Barbara soon after the accident, and also was involved in the extremely helpful fundraising efforts on Alana's behalf. And so we believe that Captain Gailey's actions and his role in our daughter's rescue, and we're sure, as other people testify, many, many incidents, accidents, emergencies, et cetera, over his 16 years of service toward our community are vastly more indicative of his skills, the caliber of professional he is, his compassion. My wife wanted me to add that word. to add that word, and his value to the community at large than, than the reasons he was fired. So we just want to respectfully ask the, the members of the city council to reinstate Captain Gailey as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Bet. Anybody else for public comment? Yes, sir. Feel so compelled, state your name. If not, no worries.
Brandon Napoli.
Welcome, Brandon.
Thank you. I also want to submit testimony for behalf of Rob, of Todd Gailey. I've known Todd for actually 15 years. I grew up here, I'm a proud Central Coast native. I grew up in Morro Bay High. In fact, the last time I was in here, I think it was for a prom or something like that. And I went to the CDF firefighting academy before starting a career in economic development. That has taken me overseas in the Peace Corps to actually speaking to Congress on behalf of the SBA microloan program. And during this, these years, these 15 years, Todd has been a loyal friend, a wise mentor and a prudent firefighter that has actually encouraged me through all of that. While many of my friends actually didn't leave the area or didn't do a lot of things I was able to accomplish, I have to give Todd a lot of the credit. I've witnessed Todd's care for others during his leadership on several missions trips to Mexico for his church, his mentoring of several young firefighters in Morro Bay, and his kindness as a father. Todd has always been that man you can depend on to make rational judgment calls in high-stress situations. I remember him climbing, I remember climbing the mountaineering road in Whitney during the winter when one of our members started having high altitude sickness. Todd made the judgment call to lead us back down the mountain at night, putting himself at risk by establishing the route through un-navigated terrain. It was not an easy call, but it was the right one. And it was only because the men who had known him for decades trusted him for his elevated ability to mitigate the risk. I've witnessed the situation from recreational nighttime officer diving to responding to 911 calls as well. Todd has earned my trust above and beyond and this community's trust above and beyond. He is a true leader that manages risk while clearing the path for his team to safely negotiate a solution. As the director of an economic development organization who oversaw our multimillion-dollar federal budget and I've managed dozens of employees, I can testify to the need of, to follow written protocol, operate with prudence outside the written rules, and invoke progressive discipline when necessary. Was there ever an instance that Todd broke, wrote, broke written protocol? Should a firefighter of 16 years has been awarded numerous awards, including firefighter of the year twice for his impeccable career of putting his life on the line for all those here, not be given the benefit of the doubt when operating outside of any written rules? And if an investigator conducted by a friend of his superior who's been written up for workplace harassment finds him culpable, is destroying Todd's career the right thing to do? It is not. It would be highly unfortunate for the city council to prioritize political ease over prudent reconciliation. In these political turbulent times, I'll finish on the sentence.
Give you 10 seconds. Thank you.
We need leaders of our city who can, with, with calm heads can bring people together and not destroy careers. And I am very confident that you are those thoughtful leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Is there any other public comment? Is open public comment for items on the agenda? And/or general public comment? No? Seeing none, I'll close it and bring it back to council. Thank you all for your public comments and testimony. First, I will ask Mr. Collins and maybe possibly Ms. Callaway to address the process for replacement of the chairs and looking into the infrastructure within the wonderful Vets Hall that's, what, now 120 years old or? But there is a process and if you could just respond to that, that would be great.
No, no problem. Can you hear me okay? Is this coming through? All right. So city council approved in the capital projects for fiscal year 1819.
I don't think you're on.
That's one, that's one of the problems.
Case in point. Perfectly timed, wouldn't you say? So city council during the fiscal year 1819 budget process approved a project in, in concept to overhaul the audio/video components of this building for obvious reasons. Our masterful AGP representatives do a phenomenal job keeping this thing up and running, but the system is antiquated, probably 15, 20 years over and needs major revamping or just start over. We've had some discussions with them as well as met internally as a staff to understand the comprehensive needs of the Vets Hall. We understand that the roof needs to be replaced, that the electrical system that kind of provides the basis for, to have a functioning AV system is probably shot. But we don't know to the full extent of what that would cost to upgrade. So we, we need to understand the foundational costs to get this building right before we would invest significantly in an AV system. So we're going through that process internally, trying to do that as quickly as possible to get an estimate of those, those costs and also compare those to what it would take to outfit the community center to do the same thing and compare those two costs to make a decision whether we pursue the upgrading here or maybe over there or an alternative. We really need to understand what we're looking at before making a decision. The chairs were part of that discussion for obvious reasons. Staff here, we have nice comfortable chairs. The audience members do not. Totally unfair and we recognize that. We were hoping this project would be along quicker, but uncovering some of these foundational issues is going to take a little bit of time to get us to where we need to be. In the meantime, we're going to look at, on suggestion of Councilmember Heller and others, looking at, maybe we can get pads for the chairs as an interim measure. Maybe we can do the chairs separate of the, the bigger item. But we, we actually need to understand the full complement of costs before we'd invest in chairs because it could be significant. We have about $400,000, $500,000 sort of stocked away for the project, but it could exceed that twofold. So we need to know before pursuing that. But I think we can get an interim thing going for the chairs in the meantime.
Great. And do you have a timeline on that just for the public's awareness?
I would say probably, looking at Public Works Director, Rob Leibig, probably a couple months or so to get estimates on the two cost options between here and community center. And then, once that's determined, it's probably several months to go through an RFP process to, we want to bring in, bring in competitive pricing to get us the best deal on the AV system upgrade as well as the other components of the building. So that, I would say probably all told, probably six months or maybe a little bit longer to get to where we are today to having an extremely functional AV system either here in the community center, just to be realistic. But the chairs again could be something modified much sooner than that.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that report. And then a comment by Mr. Weiss regarding the routing of the pipes on Quintana and the request and maybe question, will one lane be kept open during business hours? Maybe Erica or Rob could address that either?
Um, yeah.
No, we'll talk about it more in the agenda, I know, but maybe a quick.
Just quickly, that's one thing we talked. Can't hear?
Can now.
Can't hear? Okay.
There you go.
The routing along Quintana is, will be a major disruption. We all agree with that. And one thing we talked about was really leaving one lane open during construction time, not doing a full shutdown of Quintana Road. There may be some nighttime work that would involve full closures of the road, but during business hours, the goal is to keep one lane of traffic open.
Great.
Now these, the detailed plans will come, come later, but the, the goal that we're giving the design engineers is to keep that one lane open.
Great. Okay. Thank you for addressing that. I appreciate that. Item C1, Ms. Holly's comments regarding that. I'll ask our city attorney, Chris Nirmeyer, if you would comment on her issue with regard to three huge actions that weren't noticed correctly. In addition to that, the LAFCO annexation, 27 acre parcel annexation, and the consolidated permit process issues that were raised as violations of the Brown Act. So if you would, sir, thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first of all, of course, appreciate and respect members of the public reviewing the agenda and, you know, bringing forth commentary on it. I did review the correspondence received from Ms. Holly that she sent on Monday where she made these allegations in greater detail as they are referenced in public comment. I respectfully disagree with her conclusions. I believe that agenda item C1 accurately provides notice that there will be both a WORF status update and also that WORF actions will be taken. Agenda C1 item specifically says that there'll be both a status review and then possible actions concerning the WORF project. It also specifically says that staff recommends, quote, "The city council take the following actions," end quote, and then lists recommended actions. So that is, I believe, succinct and clear. As a matter of reference, government code section 54954.2A1 provides that an agenda must provide a brief general description of the business to be transacted or discussed. And I believe that that item qualifies, that there'll be both a status review and action taken. In regards to the claim that the consolidated coastal development permit isn't provided, that there isn't proper notice being provided, that it's an agenda item that council might be taking action on. Again, the title clearly states that council is to provide, quote, "direction regarding a consolidated coastal development permit," end quote, and then further recommends expressly that direction be provided on, quote, "pursuit of a consolidated coastal development permit from the CCC for all components of the WORF program." Again, that's a brief general description of the fact that the council's being asked to take action and provide direction on whether or not this permit should be consolidated. So my conclusion is legal council is that this agenda listing is in compliance with the Brown Act. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And then.
Mayor, could I make a quick?
Yes, absolutely.
A point on the, the first question that came in about upgrades is, I just wanted to, the council be aware that Mayor Heading had requested that we, if we can do any kind of interim measures, one of them was a timer that's not very evident to the community when their time is up. So we've actually placed an order on that. I think we'll have something here for the next council meeting. Just wanted to make that was understood. So thank you.
Part of a victory, yes. I appreciate that very much. Ms. Brinkman and again, Chris, I'll ask you if you would, as city attorney, her comments regarding C1 violating public hearing rights and it may be the same answer and you could certainly state that. If there's any additional comment you wanted to add to what she brought up, I just want to make sure that I gave you the opportunity.
The only thing I would add is that there's no legal requirement for a public hearing to be opened and held for these items that are on the agenda.
Okay. All right. And then Ms. Sadowski, and I might look to Rob and/or Chris, and she'd asked about a previous question that was asked the council about the status of an individual that may be serving on the LAFCO board and may be, quote unquote, "the lawyer for the MOU" and a potential conflict of interest. And again, Chris and/or Rob, I don't know if you want to comment on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for the question from Ms. Sadowski. I do recall her bringing that up in December. And the answer to that is, after talking with staff, clearly if, when the LAFCO application is going to be reviewed, there's going to be a conflict, then absolutely Marshall Okelski would recuse himself. At this point, it'd be premature for there to be any announcement to be made because it's not being reviewed. But the point's well taken. And also it's unclear whether he'll even be on LAFCO for 2019.
Great. I appreciate that. And then I, I will respond in general to the public that commented with regard to Mr. Gailey. I want to just ask you to appreciate the fact that there are, with regards to human resource issues, there are processes to follow. You can be assured that the council is aware that those processes will be followed. And I'm going to just read a statement for all of you that made that public comment and I do thank you for a very heartfelt, you know, comment about the actions. Under the Firefighters Procedural Bill of Rights Act, any punitive action against a firefighter requires that the city provide the firefighter with an opportunity for administrative appeal. The fire captain in question was indeed terminated December 4th, 2018, and has exercised his right of administrative appeal, which remains pending. Accordingly, the city is not at liberty to discuss the specifics of the matter during the appeal process. And so I'm sorry about the generic response, but that is what we must state. And then for Mr. Gailey, thank you for coming forward and bringing your testimony and I'll do the same for you. Just a reminder that you've expressed before, the Firefighters Procedural Bill of Rights Act and the city's personnel rules provide that any punitive action against a firefighter requires that the city provide the firefighter with an opportunity for administrative appeal. You have formally exercised your right of administrative appeal, which is currently pending. My understanding is that the city council is the final decision maker in your administrative appeal and that you will have a future opportunity to address the city council regarding your claims in the proper venue for that discussion. I do not wish to undermine that process and therefore will not discuss the case with you until the proper time. Thank you for your continued understanding in that. And thank you, community, for understanding those processes that we follow with regard to the protection of not only employee rights, but also the rights of the city. With that, if I missed anything?
Yep, just one.
You always catch one or two, don't you?
The issue of replacing the Surf Street stairs was mentioned.
Well, thank you very much. And we, we did talk about that last meeting, but again, Rob, if you could give us the brief overview of why that occurred?
Sure. The Surf Street stairs were removed based on an assessment by our insurance provider. Gave a recommendation that they be immediately removed because of their condition. The city placed notice on, physically on the stairs, on the approach leading to the stairs, noticed it on Facebook, the city's website and next door. And then the following day, the stairs were removed. We have placed erosion control. We'll also be installing a fence near the bottom to help to that vegetation to reestablish it, to cut down erosion until stairs can, or a, infrastructure can be installed that will allow going up and down that slope. It probably won't be stairs. It'll be a switchback ramp system so it can accommodate all users. The, those, that will be a quite expensive project. I relooked at the engineer's estimate and the one we prepared for the budget was probably a little bit light. So we'll be looking to deliver that to council at mid-year so that you have the option of discussing that and either funding that as a phased approach or not.
Great. Thank you for that.
And just to add that when you have to replace something, it has to be ADA compliant, which is why we can't just put in stairs that were there.
Yes. There's two other stairways that lead from the bluff top down to the embarcadero level, one at the Centennial Stairway at Morro Bay Boulevard and the South Street stairs. Those are made from heavy timber. They, they are not in the condition that the Surf Street stairs made out of lighter timber. And we've been able to maintain those heavy timber stairs and not remove them. The Surf Street stairs, there was basically no wood left to screw back into the treads. So they needed to be removed.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Heller.
Relative to the stairs, they've been in fairly bad condition for quite a while, isn't that, isn't that right, Mr. Leibig?
Yes, they've been deteriorating over the past few years.
Yeah. So, I mean, my condition about this, my position about the stairs is, and I've talked to the city manager about this, is that somehow staff be thinking in the back of their head when they make decisions about like this kind of decision is, is this stair going to be important to anybody in the community? Does this stair reflect what we're trying to maintain and preserve here in Morro Bay, the small-town feel, the history? I think it would have been much better if this had been talked about in public in future so that they understood the reasons for it.
I think we're getting a little off of responding to the community and I'll look to the city attorney, are we okay with regard to this or are we moving into discussion items on issues that are not on the agenda?
Councilmember Heller, like all the other council members, can speak for a few minutes on just general topics during the meeting, but it certainly shouldn't go any longer than that.
Great, thanks. Go ahead.
I appreciate that. I think it would be, staff would be well advised to think about what they're going to remove in terms of whether it's a sensitive issue with respect to the public. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question.
Did we miss any?
Well, just a question.
Uh-huh, yes.
About the stairs. I do remember this coming before CFAC and going over what it would cost, but could you give a little bit more clarity to what you meant by those figures were a little light? Like what kind of general costs we might be looking at for the stair replacement?
So, basically, to replace those stairs, we need a switchback ramp system. Typically, it'd be concrete retaining walls, concrete sidewalk, handrails, curb ramps at each end to allow that to be accessible. We're probably in the, we haven't designed it yet. This is a very parametric estimate, so it's, parametric means it's based on other projects like this. And I don't like to underestimate things because we don't like asking for more money after the fact. At this point right now, we're looking at a little over $800,000 to replace those stairs.
And does that have to be funded solely with city funding, or if there was a private entity out in the world that these stairs were important to, that wanted to help fund those stairs, is that a possibility?
It can be paid for by any legal funding mechanism. So the city can take donations for those stairs. We'll also pursue any grant funding that might be available through the state granting process, either through the Department of Transportation, or there's some parks grants, trails grants that may be appropriate for this project.
So, last question. If the public didn't want to wait, the number of months that it might take to go through the budget process, could members of the public then maybe could start a fund or start to raise awareness around the close to million-dollar cost of these stairs?
Yes.
Thank you. Temperature check. How are we doing out there?
It's 110.
Yeah, it's 110 up here. I just wanted to give you the disparity. You're warming up. We are sweating to death. So, just noted for staff's comment. And so it is better. Thank you. All right, with that, we'll move to the consent agenda. I'll open it for public comment. Anybody want to make public comment? Feel free to come forward on the consent agenda. Come on down.
Do we not need to do slips?
No need to do slips. If you'd like to, I'll take it. Oh, Dan, I'm sorry. I do see you have, I apologize. Come on up. A8, I appreciate that. I missed it. See, I'm trying to move away from these, and I didn't even see you. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet.
My name is Dan Sedley. I am a resident of Morro Bay. On item A7, I wish to thank Mayor Heading and city council for reconsidering the committee assignments and for reconsidering the alignment of the committee assignments and now submitting a more balanced listing of assignments for each of the council people. And I highly recommend approval of that current assignment on A7. On A8, I want to thank Mayor Heading for keeping a campaign promise to agendize the code of civility and to direct staff to develop this policy and encourage public and council comment. I believe that uninterrupted civil discourse by the city council, staff, and the public helps to alleviate the diverse and polarized relationships that impede progress in moving our city forward. The proposed resolution not reflected on the city agenda is therefore incomplete and should not be approved. What I'm referring to specifically is the proposed resolution does not match what's at the bottom of our current agenda. And what's at the bottom of our current agenda is what I'm opposing to, not the wording on the resolution. However, they do go hand-in-hand directly, and so therefore, the issue is at point. The current language on the bottom of the city agenda wrongly presupposes that only the public does wrong during the city council meetings. In the many months that I have been attending city council meetings, I have seen the mayor, the city council members, and staff show open disrespect and slanderous behavior, and the public doing the same, in all honesty. This is unacceptable behavior by anyone at the city council meetings. Therefore, supposing that only public does wrong at city council meetings is completely incorrect and prejudicial. The current wording at the bottom of the agenda does that. I propose that the language on the agenda apply to all present, not just the public, and that the wording reflect exactly that. Bullet number two, we are not allowed to compliment, we are allowed to compliment the council as individuals, but not hold individual members accountable when clearly mistakes are made by them alone. We have to then hold the entire council responsible when addressing an issue? That makes no sense to me, especially when council is allowed to address the public in disagreement by name. This bullet should be removed because it is prejudicial and nonsensical. Of course, the public should treat the city council and city council members and staff civilly and vice versa, but the ability to inaddress them individually as part of the council stifles public comment. Bullet three, should be reworded to apply all present at the meeting. I have personally witnessed wrongdoing by everyone at meetings, so it should pertain to everyone.
About 10 seconds, Dan. I'm wrapping up. Thank you.
Bullet four should also be reworded for all present. In conclusion, I recommend against adopting the resolution tonight until the bottom of the agenda is changed to recognize all people and not solely against the public.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other public comment for items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. I have for motion to approval and/or to pull any items. Personally, I will pull item number A8. Any other items to pull? Then you need to pull it.
I'll pull A7.
Okay, A7 and A8. Any other? None, I'll take a motion for approval of the remainder, A1 through A6.
Still moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember McPherson, second by Councilmember Davis. Any discussion? Not all those in, oh, excuse me, roll call vote. Yeah, thank you.
This could be a little tricky here. Yeah. Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
And A7, Councilmember Addis, thank you.
I just was wondering if, well, one, I was disappointed to see P-Web go, but I'm okay with that. However, I was wondering if staff could, or somebody could give another, give us again the description of what a liaison does.
I'm sorry I didn't include that language in, I think you did include it in the staff report.
You probably did, but I'm just asking if you could give a quick verbal for the public that was concerned about the reassignment.
I'll read it to you. It's on page 31 of the agenda.
Thank you for helping me.
Second to last paragraph, "The purpose of the liaison assignment is to facilitate communication between the city council and the advisory body. The liaison also helps to increase the council's familiarity with the membership programs and issues of the advisory body. In fulfilling their liaison assignment, members should either attend advisory body meetings or watch the meeting broadcast and maintain communication with the advisory body on a regular basis. Council members should be sensitive to the fact they are not participating members of the advisory body, but they are rather to create a linkage between the city council and the advisory body. In interacting with advisory bodies, council members are to reflect the views of the council as a body. Being an advisory body liaison bestows no special right with respect to advisory body business."
So then, in this reassignment, it's not that we're necessarily getting more responsibility, more interactive responsibility? That's a question.
Oh, I think that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate that. Any other comments on A7? If not, I'll take a motion for approval.
I mutually approve A7.
Second. And roll call, oh, excuse me, any further discussion? Sorry. If not, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
And thank you, Mr. Sedley, for your comments. I pulled item number A8 with regard to that, trying to do our best to improve not only the opportunity to come forward with regard to public comment, but have a two-way conversation that holds accountability not only to council, but also for the public and vice versa, back and forth. So I appreciate your comments. With that, I would like to suggest just a couple of edits that might be appropriate. First, the, let's see, page number 55, excuse me, 35, bottom sentence, "Those desiring to speak," where it says, "are asked to complete a speaker slip located at the entrance and submit it to the city clerk. However, speaker slips are not required to provide public comment." I'm good with, and I think it meets the intent. The issue is the next bullet point. When recognized by the mayor, please come forward to the podium to speak. Though not required, it is helpful for you to state your name, city of residence, whether you represent a business or a group, unless otherwise established by the mayor. There is no mandate, as I believe I understand, to state one's name, and we do say it's not required, but helpful. So my sense is, and I had a couple of emails with regards to this specific issue, that we're meeting the intent, and I did make that comment at the last meeting, that it's helpful if you want your name in the record and you'd like for us to respond, or you'd like to be in the minutes. So I'm comfortable with that language, but wanted to respond to those that had raised the comment. Mr. Sedley brought up the information with regard to bullet point, the next bullet point, "All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member thereof." And the issue at hand is whether one from the public can address individual council members. And I'll open it up for discussion on the points that were brought up by Mr. Sedley. His concern is that, at times, there may be specific issues with council members, not necessarily pejorative, but remarks that need to be made or represent a single council member that you would feel that this might violate, if I'm paraphrasing that correctly. And I'll open it up for any comments on that. Personally, I understand that it applies not only to us, but when we do return our responses, when public comment is given, we do like to use people's names and/or recognize the public specifically. I think our intent is not to make comments about community issues where individuals are called out in a negative manner. And so, I'll open it up. Any input, discussion, comments on that? I just want to be sensitive to Dan's comments.
I did have public comment.
I did have public comment, but I'll reopen it in a minute if you'd like, if you just give me a moment. Thank you.
Yeah, the only thing I would say is that the intention of this document is for the public to understand what's expected when they come to a council meeting. The city council has a code of conduct that is very specific about how we are to behave as elected officials. So I don't see the necessity of confusing the two documents. I think it's clear of, this is clear of what we expect of the public, and then we abide by our code of conduct. So I see them as two separate documents.
The next bullet point specifically refers to councilful respectfully request that you refrain from making slanderous, profane or personal remarks against any elected official. I do agree that that is also, it works both ways. And possibly, we could amend the language there, that the council respectfully requests that you refrain from making and leave that as it is, and the council would agree to the same, some language like that, if that would be appropriate in terms of consideration.
Yeah, I think that's very appropriate. I really think, as is, the tone is pretty much, okay, oh, you guys, you can't do this.
Right.
So I think those kinds of additions would be very helpful to show that it's really a two-way street and have it in this document.
An alternative would be to simply state in here that the council agrees to abide by its code of conduct and include some of the language.
That is an alternative.
Yeah, specific.
Absolutely. Because the next bullet point would be one also that I would like to also recognize is working both ways. And so, maybe a general bullet point at the end that the, your words again were? I liked them.
That the council agrees to abide by its code of civility and conduct, which includes...
The above-mentioned.
The above-mentioned, right, issues.
Okay. Are we getting that? Are we cool? All right. Any comments, issues, concerns? If not, hopefully that addresses the issue. With those changes, are you clear on the changes?
Just one question. Are we adding, and council agrees to do the same at that bullet point, or just adding a general?
No, we'll delete that, and we'll just have the general comments that Councilmember McPherson made. I like that idea.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, because that code of civility actually includes many more statements that apply to the city council and not necessarily to the public. So I think it's important to recognize that we do have a code of civility and a code of conduct that we abide by.
Okay. Take a motion for approval?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Davis.
Could we then add a bullet saying that council in turn agrees to abide by its best practices of civility and civil discourse?
I think that's what I just said.
That's what she just said.
Is that? Well, then, I agree with that.
So was there a motion and a second?
Mayor? Yes, sir. Did you want to reopen public comment? I think there was a request.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes. I'm sorry, you're standing over in the corner, huh? I was looking for slips, and I shouldn't be. Yes, please come forward. Marla, thank you. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Marla Jo Sadowski, North Morro Bay. And I'd just really like to talk about the intent of the Brown Act and the protections for the public, for public comment and First Amendment rights. What I, you know, I agree, we shouldn't be profane and all that, you know? However, as far as limiting what people can say and not say, and giving them instructions like this when they come in here, the California Attorney General's opinion about this kind of instructional, that we're all going to be really nice to each other type thing, what it does is it tends to, what they would like not have happen is that in these meetings that the opinions are tamped down so much that it gives an appearance that the status quo is okay, that everyone's happy with the status quo. One of the reasons that people have a right to come up here is to air their disapproval, dissent, as well as give recommendations. And so, that's just, I think that it, you've overdone it as far as the public goes. And you have to, you have to think about people who don't come, I come to these meetings a lot, right? But a lot of people don't like to talk in public, and if they come in here, it's because there's something real important they want to say, and they're all not public speakers. So to be handed something like this when they come in here, when they just want to share what they have to say, I mean, it feels like we're in school or something. We're not. We're adults, and we're talking about the business of the city, and we are, you're working for us, you know? So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Further public comment? Further public comment?
Cynthia Hawley, I just ask...
Welcome, Cynthia. Thank you.
That the, the language is reread tonight into the record so that the audience knows what you're voting on.
Dan, we'll give you another chance. Come on forward, sir.
Thank you, sir. My name is Dan Sedley. I'm a resident of Morro Bay. Again, to reiterate, my point is that all issues within this, I want to call it restrictive comments, apply to both city council, staff, and public, because I have seen them all misbehave, from the top to the bottom and vice versa, and I'm not naming any names right now. And that's the need for it. The alternative is to flip the page over to the next page and look at the resolution. I've looked at other city councils' agendas, and they don't have any such restrictive listing of, you can't, you can't, you can't, you can't. There's not that restrictive environment. But if we wanted to go to a positive environment, we could go to the resolution, and we could say, listen first, respect different opinions, show courtesy, avoid rhetoric, speak truthfully, debate the policy, not the person, against violence and civility, don't curse, and the other things that we have in mind. The current agenda rules set a restrictive tone, and I'm trying to open things up to where people feel that their opinion is important and that they need to be heard and that our agenda rules look that way. If the agenda says, everybody at this meeting has to abide by this, then it's cool. But like the next to last bullet, it talks about, "Any disruptive activities that substantially interfere with the ability of the city council to carry out its meeting will not be permitted, and offenders will be requested to leave the meeting." Okay, what about a city council person or a mayor that refuses to allow somebody to speak and continuously shuts them down? Can I stand up here and say, I request that this person be, consideration be given to kicking this person out of the building for this meeting? Can I do that? If it in truth, as fact, is happening? Because it has happened in the past, where public speaking has been thwarted substantially. And I'm not speaking to anybody but things that have happened. So we don't know what the city council code of ethics is. We have no idea what that is, how extensive it is, how free-flowing it is. We don't know. But we could read simple English and know that I can't curse, and neither can Councilman Jones. That's cool. We all understand that. And if we want to go to a restrictive type of agenda rules, that's easy to say, but all of us, we don't know what the city council code of ethic is. We have no idea. And I'm asking that it be written in plain English that we can all understand, or let's go to a positive and listen first and be respectful, and so on and so forth. But like I said, I've read different city councils, and they don't have these rules at the bottom. And to me, this is a restrictive shoving away of the public, that you all are at fault, and us up here, we can do no wrong.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so any other public comment? Not, I will, yes, please come forward. No, just come to the podium, please. Thank you so much. State your name if you so desire. If not, no worries.
Before you start the clock, I just have a question. Are we on item C one? Because it sounds like we're talking about something.
No, we're not on item C one. We're on item A eight.
That just misled me up there.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Any other public comment on A eight? If not, I am closing public comment, bringing it back to council. Here are my thoughts, and I may summarize based upon what I've heard. If you look at the resolution we are proposing to pass, Resolution 7-19, I do believe it outlines the behavioral issues that Mr. Sedley is referring to in detail. So I would refer you to that as part of the agenda that has been distributed previously. With regard to the bullet points that translate, in my mind, some behavioral issues over to, I won't call them rules and regulations, but general comments, possibly the shalls could be removed, and the general statement that was added by Councilmember McPherson would then apply both ways to both public as well as to council. And so I'll ask, we haven't made a motion yet, but I'll ask that in the first bullet point, that we consider all remarks should be addressed to council as a whole and leave the remainder the same. And then the second bullet points, it just respectfully request, it doesn't say you shall, or you have to, or you must. The third bullet point suggests that you should refrain, it just says, please, don't do this. And then the fourth says, "Any disruptive activities that substantially interfere with the ability to do our work," well, that obstructs the public process, and I'm comfortable with that. And the last bullet point speaks to, "Your participation is welcome, and your courtesy would be appreciated." And the statement that you made at the end, if we could read that back, the last bullet point to be added.
The last bullet point that would be added, as Councilmember Davis read it, was "The council in turn agrees to abide by its best practices of civility and civil discourse."
And according to, I would suggest we add Resolution 07-19. That would encompass everything that we've discussed, and I believe served the purpose. I'll make the motion that we incorporate that last bullet point, and I'll ask you one more time to read it back at the end, that we strike on the second bullet point on page 36, the word shall, and instead make the word should, and ask you to read that back, and I'll make a motion to approve the document as is with those changes as read back. And if there's a second, we can have it.
Second.
Okay, and we'll ask you to read that back, please.
Can I just add one comment?
Yeah, let me just hear it first, and then I'll ask, I'll ask you for discussion. Yeah, so.
Okay, on the top of page 36 of the agenda packet, the second bullet point would be reworded to say, "All remarks should be addressed to council as a whole and not to any individual council member thereof." A new bullet point would be added that says, "The council in turn agrees to abide by its best practices of civility and civil discourse and according to Resolution 07-19." And as a reminder, staff was also directed to post a copy of that resolution at the entrance to the vet's hall after it's adopted.
Correct.
Great.
And discussion?
Well, that was exactly the point I was going to make, that we intend to post it at the entrance, so that it's clear to the public and to the council exactly what rules we're abiding by.
Yes.
Frankly, I think it's still just too overbearing. I believe it is the kind of document that will keep people from speaking and keep people from coming to the meeting. It sends a bad message to the public, in my opinion. It's a laundry list of what the public can't do, and then one sentence at the bottom, that council and staff will abide by the same rules. I think it's completely overbearing. It should be reduced to about a third of the length that it is. It's not as if we have CNN-type outbursts, and in these meetings, for the most part, they are fairly civil, and I object to it as it's currently drafted.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Addis.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Of Councilperson Heller? Is that okay?
That's absolutely okay.
Okay. What would this suggestion be? Like, what would you cut and what would you keep?
Do I have to answer, Mr. Attorney?
You can do whatever you want to do. No.
No?
I'm just, I'm kind of making a joke, but the...
I'd like to move the agenda forward, so I really would.
Yeah, I'd like to move it forward. Can we meet afterwards and talk?
Well, I don't know. I mean, it...
All right, I'm going to, since there's, unless Councilmember Davis has a comment, or did you want to make further comments?
No, I'm fine.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. I'll ask for a roll call vote, and we have read the motion back.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, there's actually three items that's recommended for approval, of course.
I'm going to take them.
Okay.
Yeah, if you want. Is that okay? Great.
Absolutely.
So with the current motion, we'll, roll call vote.
I apologize. My chair doesn't move over these chairs.
Could that fix?
Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
And Councilmember Heller?
No.
The motion carries four one with Councilmember Heller opposed.
And then we'll need a motion for adopting Resolution 719, so I'd entertain that.
I move we approve Resolution numbers 719.
Second. A discussion. Not, roll call vote?
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries four one with Councilmember Heller opposed.
Did we cover, did I get them all? Mr. City Attorney? I believe I did.
The last item was directing staff to post the revised public comment guidelines online.
Okay. Take a motion for that?
Yes, I move that we ask staff to publish the guidelines on the website and on the back of the room.
Second.
Second.
All right, city discussion, roll call vote.
I apologize, I didn't catch the second.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you.
Same, ma.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Pardon?
Go ahead.
The motion carries four one with Councilmember Heller opposed.
Thank you. We'll take a five-minute council break for health issues.